We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Voting Meeting for tonight, our regular meeting, which is November the 7th. And we'll have our invocation by Pastor Darius Elder, Care Pastor of Chapel Hill Church. Is he here? Ask the pastor to come forward. And after the invocation, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by Mayor Protim, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for your abundant blessings. Thank you for the gift of life, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for relationships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in a useful work such as this, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you grant our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and this assembled council the wisdom to govern amid the challenges and issues of these times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them, O Lord, a thirst for justice and righteousness and the confidence of what is good and fitting. Endow them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Award each of them tonight personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our great city of Douglasville. It is in your blessed name we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Elder, we appreciate that poignant and blessed invocation. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville for our regular voting meeting. This is a city council meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken this evening on the items that were discussed at our legislative work session on last Thursday. If the business year is here for, if you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there is ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. And I'll just go over a few of our procedural issues and items so that you'll be aware of how the meeting is going to take place this evening. I ask that you'll please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts that are important for us to make our decisions as a governing body. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience or cheer or carry on conversations when you come to the podium. We'll ask that you'll please not be disruptive in that way. I'll remind you that we're only required to accept public comments on zoning matters. And if you have an electronic device or cellphone, we ask that you'll please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is the agenda and how the agenda will be handled this evening. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, and then that person or applicant representing that agenda item will come forward and give us a presentation. If you've spoken with us last Thursday, we're only accepting new material as it relates to that issue. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions. And then after a 20-minute during the zoning period, after a 20-minute time for those in favor and 20 minutes for those in opposition, we will take the vote. And each person has five minutes to speak. If you would like to have a conversation or come and talk to us about any of those items, there are cards, speaker cards out on the table. We ask that you will please fill those out, hand it to the assistant city clerk, and give us your name and address for the record. Each person has one opportunity. We're not here to debate or question and answer format, just hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. And if it's just for FYI information, we'll be happy to do that and follow up with you at a later date. If you have any printed material, please hand that to our assistant city clerk, and we will, Ms. Jackson, and we will move on. So now, we do have agendas that are printed out on the desk. If you like a paper, old-school paper agenda, or you want to follow on the screen, it's there as well. Those are the announcements. There is a presentation that is not listed, but I'm going to take a point of personal privilege because I went in the city manager's office today and saw something that was great. And so I wanted to present to her and have the council come around. Our city manager is so well-respected all over the state of Georgia and beyond, and she was asked to attend a pilot program that the University of Georgia offered with the Carl Vincent Institute of Government. And it says, "University of Georgia," I'm not going to say anything, Councilman Adams, about the game that just happened. Yes, sir. Carl Vincent Institute of Government, "in partnership with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators officially recognizes Marcia Hampton for participation in the NFBPA 2022 City-County Manager Symposium." And this is signed by the University of Georgia's Carl Vincent Institute Government President and the President of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. So city manager, if you can just tell us about some of the people who attended, and then we're going to give you a hand and come around and take a photo with you.
Well, I appreciate it. It was definitely the small city in the room, I will say that. So city managers from the city of Dallas, the city of Phoenix, King County, which is from the state of Washington, DC, city manager from Durham, North Carolina, Augusta, Richmond County was there, Columbia, South Carolina was there, Richmond, Virginia, Charlottesville, Virginia, and...
Texas.
I'm sorry.
Texas.
Texas, so it was the city of Dallas, Texas, and the city of Austin, Texas. So those managers, it was 20 of us. Originally NFBPA held their program in Texas, at the University of Texas, but the organization met Mayor Shaw, which we all know, and she convinced them that the University of Georgia would be a better location for their program and that they could actually do a better job of educating city and county managers. And she said that she can pull together some great managers from the state. So she got 20 of us that she knew, and we all participated in training from 7:30 in the morning until 8:30 every night for two and a half days. I don't think I saw sunshine until Friday, and we all had a class, a project that we had to do a case study, and we used the city of Dallas's issue, which they have, Councilman Adams, 1,000 PUDs in the city of Dallas. 1,000, Ms. Reed. And their concern now is that they cannot get to real, true zoning because almost everything within the city of Dallas is a PUD and is causing complications, as well as the fact that they can't, they can't design and zone things on the south end of town because, on the south of I-30, because there is no infrastructure there. Everything has been built to the north. And of course, if you're familiar with Dallas, there are a lot of famous and high-figure political figures that live in Dallas. So they have a challenge. And in Texas, very similar to many states in the country, I think we may be one of the only ones where cities and counties can provide the same service. The city and counties are regulated by the state constitution as to what service that they can provide. So right now, they are not able to convince their county government to provide the infrastructure, to provide the service, to improve those locations on the south side, which unfortunately, through redlining, have traditionally been those lower socioeconomic communities. I wish I would be able to say that we gave the city manager some advice to be able to help his issue, but I think we at least gave him a sounding board to be able to at least have some ideas and contacts that he can talk through. But it was very interesting, first time in a while that I've been in that small of a group with large cities. And we still reign top, Douglasville did, even out of those cities, we're doing far better than the rest of those, I will say. But it was a great experience. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity the city always gives me to be able to participate.
Well, thank you, city manager, for making us proud. And I know I don't like to embarrass you, but I wanted to... She's like, "Oh, no, don't worry about that. No, we have to recognize you." So if we please can give the city manager a hand and then come around and take a picture.
If we can scoot over a little bit. That's good. There you go. All right, right here, one, two, three. All right, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much, city council. I appreciate you all allowing me to go outside of the agenda. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda. Open the floor for a motion to adopt the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for November 7, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. It's been properly moved in second to adopt the regular meeting for today for the agenda of November 7, 2022. Do we have any comments or questions as it relates to this item? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted for the regular meeting for November 7, 2022 unanimously. We'll move on then to item number six, which approval, which is the approval of the minutes. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2022 Legislative Work Session and the minutes of October 17, 2022 Committee and Executive Session and Regular Meeting. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. It's just been properly moved in second to approve this item, item 22-378. Do we have any comments or questions from the council? Not seeing any? All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-378 is unanimously approved. Now, we will move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any questions, comments, corrections, or any concerns from the council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We'll move on then to item number eight, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Protim, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Finance Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance has no business tonight.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to item number 10, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thanks so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight under the Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
We'll begin with item A, to consider a request for development plan approval for the Riverside West Spec IV development on 55.37 acres, North River Road, landlots 165, 173, 174, 997, and 998, Districts 1 and 18, Section 2 and 5. Parcel ID is 01730150012. Plans dated May 31, 2022. Application by Rooker Riverside LLC, and Mr. Marcus Thompson will help us with that.
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701, Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. Do not have any additional information to report at this time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I know that we had a discussion with the applicant present on Thursday night, and as you all know, this is one of two potential buildings that would complete that industrial park there off of Riverside. I believe that we ask that question each time, and we'll ask it again. Mr. Thompson, nothing has changed that would cause us to have any question concerning the correctness and the adherence to the UDO as far as their development plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments that were not discussed on Thursday night by council or by Madam Mayor? Okay. Seeing none, then, I will go forward and make a motion on item 22-379 that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes, in your ward. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-379. Do we have any additional comments or concerns for the chair or Mr. Thompson and council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-379 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to item B, which is the next development in the same industrial park. Consider a request for development plan approval for the Riverside West Spec V development on 45.967 acres, North River Road, landlots 173 and 174, District 1, Section 5. Parcel ID is 01730150014. Plans are dated February 10, 2021. Application again by Rooker Riverside LLC. Mr. Thompson?
No additional information at this moment to report.
All righty. Same drill, mayor and council. We discussed this with the applicant on Thursday night, and this would then be the final, I believe, the final lot in that development. Is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And again, the development plan that they presented is in adherence to all of our rules and regulations according to our UDO as far as materials and size, and there's no conditions, correct?
There is no conditions.
Questions, comments, or council? Moving right along then, item B, which is... I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Thompson, did you have something?
Yes, sir. There is a condition for this development plan case. Prior to the applicant receiving the land disturbance permit submission, the applicant must provide a minimum of 255 parking spaces for the development or an alternative parking plan.
That's correct. I do remember that. I apologize. I did not mention that, Mr. Thompson. And I'm sorry I cut you off. So that would be the condition of the approval for the development plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none, then we'll go forward. I'll make a motion on item 22-380 that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-380 with the stipulations as recited by our city engineer, Mr. Thompson. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Madam Mayor, point of order, I did not receive a screen to move that or to vote on it.
It's not popping up on mine.
Okay.
Did you get it, Ms. Jackson? You said, "Try now, please."
Got it. On the move.
Did it work?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No.
Are we going to have to do a hand?
No, I'm done.
Yep.
Okay.
It works for me, too.
Has everyone been able to vote? Okay. All right, so having said that, all those in favor of approving item 22-380, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, believing that the technology has caught up. Then 22-380 is unanimously approved.
Item C, consider a request for development plan approval for the Homewood Suites development on 1.98 acres on Bob Arnold Boulevard and landlots 615, 616, and 678, District 18, Section 2. Parcel ID is 06781820011, with plans dated September 22, 2022. Application by H Hotels LS LLC. Mr. Thompson is with us to give us any other information.
Yes, sir. Basically, I just want to provide more clarity on Councilman Adams' comment last Thursday in regards to the 32-foot turning radius. So with that being said, basically, that requirement, that stipulation is a requirement in our UDO. So I just didn't want the listeners or you guys to think we were just making anything up. And you will see, moving forward, you will see similar comments, similar to that with that, because we transitioned the development plan application process to the engineering department. So you will be seeing comments in that nature. Because it's something we want to catch early.
Right.
Yeah.
So without a variance, then, that would be the standard as far as turning radius, so that you would give emergency vehicles and large vehicles more of an opportunity to make a turn in and out of there safely?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Questions, comments, or council?
I did have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for clearing that, Mr. Thompson. So you mentioned that about the turn radius, and I thought the applicant mentioned something to us about a fire hydrant, not a fire hydrant, but parking or the park, because this is a shared driveway with two hotels, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
He mentioned something about parking or a driveway.
Yeah, so the applicant and myself will be discussing the parking requirements that I have mentioned within my staff report. And basically, he will be applying for a variance in order to provide that parking within that landscape strip.
Okay, so that's a separate issue than what's happening tonight? Okay. I just wanted to make certain, I understood I did remember him mentioning something, so I wanted to see if I was remembering correctly. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, comments? So, Mr. Thompson, you're ready to move forward with the development plan for him, and then the variance would be applied for if they decide that they have to have it at a later date as a part of this?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll move forward. I make a motion that we approve, item 22-382.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-381. Do we have any additional comments or questions for Mr. Thompson or Ms. Chairman? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-381 is unanimously approved.
Item D, consider a request for development plan approval for the Astoria at Crystal Lake Senior Living Development for 9.77 acres, Chicago Avenue, in landlots 193 and 224, District 2, Section 5. Parcel IDs 0224, 025, 0034, and 0224, 025, 0028, with plans dated September 7, 2022. Application by the Benoit Group LLC. Mr. Thompson, can you give us any additional information? I know there were some questions and some concerns about this final plat and about the development plan. Can you help us, please?
Yes, sir. I will go ahead and defer to our city manager for comments.
Okay. Ms. Hampton?
Yes, sir. I had a question or some questions from some of you all regarding this item. And after a meeting this morning with Ms. Jordan, Ms. Reed, and Mr. Thompson in evaluating whether or not we could proceed with the development plan prior to the final plat, the answer was no. You have to have the final plat approved prior to moving forward in the development plan process per our ordinances. The other matter is, I question, well, can we actually approve the final plat and then proceed with the development plan approval? And then after doing more research with staff, there's still some pending items that the applicant has not submitted related to the final plat. I also made some phone calls today, so including comments back from internal staff and outside agencies. We're still pending those items to approve the final plat. So we'll be working with the applicant to get that done to allow us to make certain that we're ready for approval on both on November 17.
Okay. So basically, then, we would need to consider a tabling of this, or is that the best way to handle it and table it until the 17th and the 21st? Is that correct?
I think we should be able to make those dates, so I would recommend if you're comfortable with tabling, let's go ahead and table for the 17th and 21st.
Okay, just to be, just to make sure that we're clear, both our legal staff and our staff are telling us that we do not need to move forward without an approved final plat prior to considering a request to approve the development plan. Is that correct? Okay. Questions, comments?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. I have a question. So I just wanted to, I do understand definitely that the final plat needs to be submitted, and thank you so much for doing your due diligence. I just wanted to make sure that I forwarded two emails to Ms. Hampton as well as Ms. Reed. I wanted to make sure that you did contact the contact person, Ms. Mary, I'm sorry, I can't think of her last name, from Golden. And also, question, so from my understanding, or email that I received, not from Raven, the staff member from Benoit, is that at one point there had been a final plat submitted? If it was submitted, was there errors? So if it's, two questions, was there ever a final plat submitted, and if there were errors in that? So that's, those are questions I was approached with today.
There was a final plat application that was submitted, but there were two parcels in question. So one, Mr. Dawson has cleared up with Douglas County, and then there's another matter that has not been cleared up as of today. Is that correct, Miranda?
Yes, ma'am. So there is a parcel that is adjacent to the parcel which is being put forth for council's approval on the 17th on the combination plat. It was staff's understanding that that parcel, which is owned by the same owner as the current owner, was going to be purchased and included in that combination plat. But when staff reviewed that plat last two weeks ago, it had not been, for the November 17th plat approval, it had not been included. What that is doing is that is landlocking that property. And under our UDO, that's not permitted. We can't allow, even if the property owner says they're okay with it, our rules say that we can't permit that. So that would require us to make an exception to our own rules to move forward on that approval. And that has to do with the plat approval, not necessarily the development approval. But as Ms. Hampton has noted, we have to have the plat approved before we can move forward with having the development plan approved.
So the completion of the purchase and sale of that particular parcel needs to be perfected and closed as a part of then the final plat approval? That has to be done in advance, correct?
Not necessarily, but that parcel was not even included on the plat that is, that was submitted for approval.
So it's not included for the Benoit Group as far as a part of the development plan? That part was left out?
Right, and it was a, it was a small sliver parcel, but that's, that's what kind of connects the next parcel up, which is the county parcel. And then the next parcels up, which are Golden, United Methodist. But those are, those are accessed through another parcel.
So we need all that the Benoit Group is going to be developing included on this final plat request, and it's not there?
Right, and they represented to us that they were going to be purchasing that sliver, which would help us deal with some of the issues regarding Van Sant Mill Road.
Okay.
And, and that parcel was not included on the combination plat. So we're still awaiting an answer from them as to, A, are they still planning on doing that and including that? And if they're not, then we're going to have to, to make some, to communicate with them on some requirements.
To Councilmember Burdanley to answer your question. Yes, they have submitted an application. However, it's an incomplete application. That's been advised to them on multiple occasions through legal and through community development. So as of right now, what we need is a complete application to address the things that Ms. Jordan is mentioning.
Right, so for the timeline, and I'm just asking staff, just based on what is needed, if this is tabled tonight and brought back on the 17th, voted on the 21st, do you foresee, I mean, of course, you can't, do you foresee during this timeline, working with them diligently and communicating effectively, that this is something that can be done?
I think it's something that can be done. My advice is, I think what I've, what I've realized through this process, there've been a lot of voices and a lot of spokespersons that have been communicating to a lot of various people, and it's confusing the matter. So I did read some communication where Ms., I think it's Ms. Thompson and the applicant's attorney were communicating with community development and with legal. I've advised on numerous occasions, we need one point of contact. And if we don't get one point of contact, we're continuing to have matters lost in time that basically slips by. Ms. Reed, are you aware, has WSA submitted their comments? So we still don't have comments on their application from the Water and Sew Authority. So we can control our end... So we can control our end, but then there's still the outside agencies that have to respond.
Right, so did the Benoit Group, I was under the impression that, what I was told today, that they were told that this item was taken off. So were they not invited to this meeting, or did they just choose not to come?
Just chose not to come.
Yeah, I have not, I have not spoken to them. The contact person that I received information from, I left, that you sent me, I left a voicemail, but I've not spoken to anyone with the Benoit Group today.
Mr. Chairman?
I got a, earlier text from Ms. Armstrong, and she was advised that November 17. So that's probably why they didn't come.
Right, well, I just wanted to make sure that, like, there's no, there's not a representative here from Benoit Group. They were here on Thursday. I just want to make sure that the communication is appropriate. I know we have, our staff is very capable, and I do understand, thank you, Ms. Hampton, but just answer the emails that have been sent, keep me in the loop of what's going on. I don't want any surprises from this point forward. If you'd just please keep me included, so that I can communicate appropriately to those that need to be appropriated, communicated with. Thank you.
Others? Then as our staff and as legal staff have recommended on item D, as far as the Astoria at Crystal Lake, I will make a motion that we table this item 22-382 to the meetings of November 17 and November 21, 2022. That is my motion.
I'm sorry, Councilman Adams, I wanted to make one other notation. It is also my understanding that Attorney Fowler is working with, with the development, I mean, the Douglas County Housing Authority and the Benoit Group. He has been given some, that's just the information that I received today, so I think it's positive that they can all work together. I just want to see this project, hopefully they'll get things done, and it'll be completed. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am, no problem.
All right.
Thank you. So there's a motion to table item 22-382 to the meetings of November 17 and 21, 2022. We have a motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. This has been properly moved in second to table items 22-382 to the meetings of November 17 and 21, 2022. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item from council members?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What's on our screen right now, looks like it doesn't say anything about tabling, so are we pushing the screen, or are we just doing a voice vote on the table?
It is a vote for a tabling. I have a setting for tabling. You may not be able to see it, but you're voting to the tabling.
My motion was for a table. Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Candace, it does say, it doesn't show on my screen because I don't vote, unless it's a tie.
It's on this, it's on her end.
Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty. So on her end, it says that Councilman Wass, are you, you okay with the response?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alrighty, so there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded to table item 22-382 to the meetings of November 17 and 21, 2022. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the tabling of item 22-382 to the 17th and 21st meetings of November 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This item is tabled to the 17th and 21st.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item E. Consider a request for development plan approval for the Douglasville Storage Development for 4.704 acres on Georgia Highway 5 and Bright Star Connector, land lots 161 and 162, District 2, Section 5, parcels ID 01620250038 and 01620250030, plans dated October 13, 2022, the application by White Oak Development Partners. Mr. Thompson?
I have no additional items to report at this time.
Okay. I know that there's been some discussion and some concern. We have, we have talked about this on Thursday night about the zoning of the property. I do have a question. Can we get, and I'm assuming the verification's been done, that the property was zoned properly for this development in, in the past, and that it is presently zoned to accommodate that development?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll open the floor for questions or comments, and I believe, Ms. Miller, you had a comment?
Thank you very much. And I do understand that we are talking about the development plan right now and not the zoning, although I think that my concerns fall back on zoning because, as you guys, I'm sure, are all aware, many storage units fall right in line with a handful of other uses that our residents are, and I know, I'm sure several of us as well are very concerned about because we have an abundance of. And I believe Madam Mayor brought up last week, if we could please look into the number of businesses that we have like this for moving forward. And after having further conversations today, I was hoping that we could possibly look at maybe doing a SLUP on these types of properties moving forward, because several of these, I think that when they're, they're zoned this way, and then it's just such a broad use that they can be, and I was told by a very wise person this afternoon that when apartments come, storage units come, and that is very true. But it's somewhere, I feel like we are the voice of our residents, and we have to do what we can to, to serve our community the best way possible. So if we could please look into those couple of things.
Others? Any other discussion or question? Madam Mayor?
I'll just bring it up under other business, not, because it won't be about this particular business, but it's the topic.
All right.
Thank you.
No other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor Proten?
Question for council, councilors, is there, would there be any ramifications of denying a development plan to, in this particular case, to a development that is properly zoned?
If it's properly zoned, you've got a right if this development plan meets the criteria of code to have it approved.
Thank you, sir.
Does that help you, Mr. Mayor Proten?
Yeah, I guess it does.
Any other? Okay. Then item E, 22-389, moving forward, Mr. Thompson, one more time, we will ask the question, that this development plan does meet all of the criteria of the UDO? Are there any special conditions that you have added on the development plan for this development?
Yes, sir.
Would you please read those to us? Want to make sure we have all the information.
The only condition I added for this item was for the applicant to submit an exemption plat, application to Douglasville Community and Development Department to combine parcels
And the purpose of that was? What was the purpose of that? I didn't understand what you...
Oh, because right now, basically, the, the development plan that the applicant submitted is showing that they're using both properties, so, but those properties are separate right now at the moment, so...
Okay, so the development plan is being approved for their entire parcel, and that is made up of two parcels?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so now I have a question. If the development plan is to approve this type of development on both parcels, but only one is being developed now, so does that mean there's a large amount of the property that is left, that is left potentially for, for expansion?
No, sir. Well, the site plan shows that the building is spread across both entire properties.
So all the property will be used in for this one development?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, and it's shown that way. It's not shown with future. It's shown, if I can get back to that screen, it's shown to have all of the property used because of topo, and I'm assuming rock and topography is what it appears these two parcels are being combined together for that development?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, I understand. All right. Does that bring on any other question or comment? Okay, seeing none, then I make a motion that we approve item 22-389.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. This has been properly moved in second to approve item 22-389. Do we have any additional comments as relates to this item from council members? Like a question mark, Mayor Proten?
No, more internal than external.
I know. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-389 is approved.
Okay, we'll move on to item F. This is a little different, so I will ask for Ms. Reed to come forward. City Council to advise staff in moving forward with a city-initiated rezoning application for various parcels along Drury Lane. This is item 22-392, and I will invite Ms. Reed to fill us in on that zoning, please.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Shaila Reed, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. So we had a, I guess, an inspection or drive-along the Drury Lane area within the last couple of weeks, and identified that there's a number of parcels that are operating as commercial, which they have for a while, and they currently have R2 zoning classifications. And so that prohibits the issuance of licenses or business licenses because of that. And so we're asking for council to allow for staff to rezone the parcels accordingly to their actual operations, to allow for the businesses to continue as they are operating along Drury Lane. So we have found that if council agrees to allow us to move forward with a city-initiated rezoning, we're able to put this item on the Planning Commission agenda for December 6, and then Mayor and Council for the 15th and 19th of December.
To get it into this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a little background, I know that some of the people that have been affected by this had called me this week. Mr. Andy Ledbetter is here representing Thurman and Thurman LLC, who owns the buildings, and I understand in talking with Andy this week that these buildings have been purchased recently by that LLC, and they have some tenants in them, and I can, I can say that the buildings, I have never known them to not be commercial. If I'm not mistaken, the county's records show them to be commercial as a general, general commercial zoning, I do believe.
Yes, sir. The Tax Assessor's Office has identified it as a tax base for commercial, but the zoning office, I'll have a report for you, should you desire to have a rezoning, I'll have the farback date we can find on zoning for that.
Okay, and I do understand that they have been being taxed as commercial businesses?
Correct.
And have been being used. I know that some 50 years ago, I actually was a member of a health spa that was located in one of these buildings, and of course, that would have been a commercial zoning. So your request for us tonight, then, would be that we vote to give you the ability to move forward with a city-initiated rezoning in order to, as far as a housekeeping issue, make these agree with the uses?
Correct, sir.
And that would be at the expense of the city?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments? Madam Mayor?
I do have a question. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Reed. So it's really to make all of the records align the same, and whatever shows on the tax record that is residential, that it truly is commercial at the city level.
Correct.
So why do we, I know it is an expense to these businesses outside of their time, why can't you just change it without, I mean, they should be grandfathered in. To me, it doesn't make, like, we're going through the process in, like, an administrative paper change, but if they've been commercial, the 28 years I've been here, and everyone thinks it's commercial, but it doesn't show commercial on the piece of paper, and they're there, why are we going through all this?
So the grandfathering clause works as, you only have about six months to have a grandfathering. So if a current owner of a property decides to close their business, if they do not open that license or renew the license within six months, their grandfathering is lost. Changing the zoning makes it so there's no need for a grandfathering. It automatically grants the use consistently with the zoning. And as you know, zoning is a lifetime. Grandfathering is a six-month timeframe.
Mayor, and I'll also add, this cleans it up, that if ever another commercial business tries to get a business license, the appropriate zoning is there. Currently, right now, they don't have the appropriate zoning. So what you're making the adjustment for in your zoning map applies to any commercial establishment that ever opens up there, not just these particular businesses.
Okay, so grandfathering is six months? I thought, my grandfather was older than six months old. Grandfather isn't grandfather for, for ever and ever, like the patriarch?
No, ma'am, it has a timeline.
Of the foundation of the city? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor Proten?
Chair, point of order, I think everybody here probably understands pretty fairly well what we're attempting to do with this resolution, but there is no resolution attached. There's nothing that has any specific meaning as to what we're approving.
It's not really a resolution, it's just giving staff direction to start the process.
So we don't need to, that doesn't need to be provided as a resolution?
Well, I was told, Joel, a resolution doesn't necessarily have to be written, does it? It can be...
You can have an oral resolution, which is what you'd be doing.
Which is item F, which is, as it is described.
Okay, just want to make sure we're following the rules.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Others?
Chair.
Okay, so this will make whole, those businesses that are trying to move into those spaces, and it will prevent this from occurring again three, five, 10, every how many years down the road, or in the next year that a new business might move in that has not previously been there and would not be grandfathered in as to the use, this would be permanent.
Correct.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to make sure that we, let Mr. Ledbetter know that we apologize for the inconvenience that it has caused you, and we want to make sure that we, we make things right there from a housekeeping standpoint. Thank you, Ms. Reed and Ms. Hampton for helping us with this. I'll make a motion in that we approve item 22-392.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Proten. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 22-392. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-392 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one last item, and that is related to the previous item. Authorize city staff to issue temporary business licenses to the following businesses pending rezoning applications. And this would be based upon what we have just done in item F. Those are Griffin's Automotive Inclusion LLC, Dreams Come True International Foundation, Two Next Level Consulting LLC, Kingdom Empirement Fellowship International Incorporated. Ms. Callen?
Yes, sir. Karen Callen, Finance Director, 6695 Church Street. And as the chairman said, this does relate to the previous item that was discussed. These four business applications were denied due to zoning. They are commercial businesses, and as she previously mentioned, it is zoned currently residential, so there will be more than likely another round of these coming up at the next council meeting until we can get it rezoned. So these four businesses, and we're asking that they be approved for a temporary business license.
Ms. Callen, that does not forego that any requirements that the business would have to, to achieve, or anything that they would have to bring to us, this is not an automatic rubber stamp. This is just the fact that they are able, and they would then be allowed to get a business license if they qualify, correct?
Correct. The only reason they were denied is because of zoning.
Okay. Questions, comments? I'll ask Mr. Ledbetter, since he is the owner of the establishment, would this take care of our issues that we've had this week? Mr. Ledbetter, would you mind coming to the podium, please? Just give us your name and address for the record. I want to make sure that we have this puppy put to bed here.
Andy Ledbetter, 2033 Sweetwater Church Road, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Yes, I'll take care of it.
Okay, so those four, those four locations would be taken care of, and...
Yeah, a couple of them need to get their business license before they can secure contracts.
Yes, sir.
They've been held up for that matter, so this would help greatly.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Andy.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will make a motion on item 22-393 that we approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. This has been properly moved in second to approve item 22-393. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-393 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have tonight under planning and development.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate you going through that healthy committee. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate you going through that healthy committee. Thank you, our Finance Director, Ms. Callen, and our Community Development Director, Ms. Reed, and our City Engineer, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate your support and staff, and thank you, Mr. Ledbetter, for coming out. We apologize for the inconvenience. Yes, sir. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
At this time, no business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Technology Committee.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanyly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight. It's authorize the mayor to sign the proposal for additional services. Historic Resource Survey for PI 0017811-SR92 and CS532 Brown Street to Macaulay Street, Change Order Number Two with Croy Engineering LLC with the proposed budget amount of $199,509 for the Dallas Highway Improvement Project. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. I basically just want to reiterate what was proposed initially. Croy Engineering's budget to perform this historical research survey included combining historical resources. And these historical resources includes like things such as buildings, structures, different types of objects that could be signs, streetlights, and sites such as cemeteries and parks that are at least 45 years old. They wanted to combine these into five different groups, which they consider historic districts. We're not in no way or fashion creating a new historic district. This is a term used for federally funded projects. So with that being said, with more coordination with Croy and GDOT, GDOT is requiring Croy to separate these areas into individual parcels, basically, to conduct these surveys.
Right. So those surveys, so just, I didn't actually put this on the consent agenda because I wanted to read it, and it was very detailed. So just based on my understanding with the recommendation from GDOT is that they go through, it actually increased to 69. Is that correct, from five to 69?
That is correct.
Right.
And I also want to state that is a requirement for historical research surveys that you do an individual analysis on each parcel. So that's why GDOT is requiring coordination to go back.
And this project will not start until 2027. Is that correct?
Construction, yes.
Construction. All right. Wow, that'll be here before you know it. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Thompson, are you familiar with HABs, the Historic American Building Survey? The reason I'm asking is, are they preparing drawings to be included in as part of that? Is that-
Sorry, could you repeat?
Historic American Building Survey. Is that part of what they're doing? Are they going to be creating drawings for that?
So I don't know to an extent, but I do know that the reason for the survey is to basically come up with ways to preserve these historical resources and also register the historical resources on the Georgia National Register of Historic Places.
I'm wondering if that's one of the deliverables.
It's not a deliverable from, so you all have done historic research surveys before. We've come to you all for these matters, particularly in federal-funded projects. It's something that GDOT requires through the federal government. We did it on Highway 92. We've done it individually, even in downtown. And to Mr. Thompson's point, it's not really drawings. It's more documentation and collecting of basically facts and resources so that if anything happened on this parcel, it would be documented that you have this item attached. So for instance, if we're close to the cemetery across from St. James AME, that may be documented as a resource. So it'll be a book, in a sense, that you will have of documented information. Photos-
It won't be measured drawings.
No, no, no. Photos, probably, but not measured drawings.
They don't go into the building, get the floor plan. I mean, if you're familiar, the HAB survey started back in the 30s, and there's a tremendous library of historic buildings documented through that program. And I thought that maybe they would be adding to that.
No, it wouldn't be that detailed. We have a couple that I actually probably still have from back in 2009 and 2008. I can share with you, but mainly it's photos, not drawings.
And this is a really good resource. It's a very detailed research document. So it's a very good resource to have. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, then, Madam Mayor, I would like to put this item on the agenda for an approval, item 22-369.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. We have a motion to approve. Item 22-369. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. This has been properly moved by the Chair, Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanyly, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve item 22-369. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns as it relates to this item from council members? Outside of Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem? No? Okay. Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 22-369 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no other items under transportation.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you again, Mr. Thompson. Now is the portion for other business. Do we have any other business to bring before council from the elected officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to make a comment. On Saturday, this past Saturday, our Police Department Chief Sparks and his staff did a phenomenal job presenting to the Avalon community. And although the room wasn't full, the information was very, very beneficial. I encourage each of you, there's a town hall meeting this Thursday at 6:30 at the Public Safety Building. The information that they are giving is very, very interesting. And I would say just mind-boggling as it relates to the amount of fentanyl that is going on, the use of fentanyl and other items that's going on, not just in the state of Georgia, but just be very diligent. And I just want to thank the Police Department, the chief and his staff, for being so thorough. And the community building that they're doing is really excellent. It was a very good dialogue during that time. Thank you.
Very good. I'm glad you were able to attend. I had a ARC retreat that I had to attend at Fox Hall for two days, so I apologize for missing that community meeting. If that was good. Any other announcements or concerns? One thing that Councilmember Nicole Miller mentioned, and City Manager, I brought it up at the last meeting, is I wanted us to do a moratorium, a study on storage units in the city of Douglasville, just to see the balance of what we have. And I don't know how the, just for us to do a study. If we can do a moratorium for a timeframe, I'm not certain what that timeframe could be. I know we've done it before for dollars, just different things, so.
It's up to you all. We can have on your agenda for the 17th and 21st to do a moratorium. In the meantime, definitely through business license, we can get the number of storage facilities that are within the city, and then see if we can get GIS to map those out. Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, just to see if it's a rhyme or reason, or of course, you don't want to limit any business, but just to see if, you know, we have, if there are multifamily and people need other stores, you know, limited space and need storage units, if it fits within a timeframe geographical space where it makes sense. And just for us to see, I don't know if any other council member had any concerns about that, but.
Right. Can I add to that? Also, when you are preparing your study, can you also prepare and look at the distance of the storage units as well?
I can, and I can get some information for someone possibly to come and speak with you all. I was just recently out of training on storage facilities. Storage facilities, as Ms. Miller mentioned, are typically following multifamily. And storage facilities as an economic generator become very profitable businesses. So very much like car washes. So those are the two things that you will see pop up popular. So they will be very much so market-driven. So, you know, when you're looking to see what is driving the industry, what's driving the industry is the economy, as far as money, where to place business, and the other is use and how people are using them, you know. Very, very much low overhead in both businesses, and in a sense, almost become somewhat cash cow businesses.
Right. Have we, did we do car washes already? Have we done a moratorium on car washes?
You all talked about it, and we've gotten the number. We haven't had a moratorium in a while. I think it's, I would have to check with Marcus to see if we have anything new coming online from a development plan here, Ms. Reed. But we can bring both sets of information from you all, but, you know, to kind of have a summary answer of what's driving it, it's market conditions are driving it.
Okay. And do we have a comprehensive, don't we have our new comp plan coming up, or do we have to renew? And so that means we'll look at the entire city to see what is going on as far as the balance of residential, commercial, entertainment, all of that?
Yes, ma'am. Your comp plan is due next year.
Okay. So we can look at it then. Thank you. I appreciate that. I want to chime in with Councilmember Dr. Burdanyly and talk about how great our staff is. We did have a wonderful event, the Stranger Things Festival, that had taken place on Saturday afternoon. I stopped by. Ms. Chelsea was skating away. Where is she? Ms. Chelsea had her skates on, and it was real fun. And captain, nope, Lieutenant Marshall, no, no, Major Cannon. It was just a lot of fun. It was a lot going on that day. So the staff did a great job, Mr. Post and his group. So that was exciting. We do have this weekend, City Hall's going to be closed on Friday for Veterans Day, and there's a Veterans Day parade at evenings. So those are the three things I want to bring to our attention. I want to thank our veterans for their service in the city of Douglasville. All righty. So we'll move on. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Madam Mayor, with the study of the storage buildings, can you give us, is that going to come back on the 17th and 21st, or when will you have that?
We can quickly get the numbers of both storage units and car washes for the 17th and the 21st. If you all want us to do more than location and count and do an official study, I mean, we can do that, but we will definitely be able to have mapping and the number.
All right, thank you. But the number will not denote, or us doing a moratorium, we can still do that to look at the data and do a comparison? No? Okay.
You'll have that information, so you can make the decision if you want to vote to move forward on that or not.
All righty. All right. And the topping off ceremony today at the Town Green, want to thank staff and the citizens and the elected officials for coming to that. That's exciting. That was our last beam to go up, and hopefully we'll start seeing more things happening at the Town Green. So that was exciting today. So now we'll move on to updates from city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. I told Mr. Dotson, he looked like he was in Attorney's Today magazine. So sharp. Oh, move on to staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan. Thank you so much. Our police department.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager.
Only to reiterate what you mentioned, that City Hall will be closed on Friday in observance of Veterans Day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service, city manager. We have come to the portion in the meeting. Comments from citizens and delegates, if you'd like to approach us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business. remain to the city of Douglasville.
My name is Cindy Welch. I live at 3002 Concord Bay, Douglasville, Georgia. And I was excited to see someone else bring up the name Dury Lee Lane. I brought it up over two years ago, and I'm still waiting for penalty towing to get their vehicles out of the right-of-way. They have put up a fence, but now they park their vehicles on the outside of the fence adjacent to the street. And there is a new business that is down the road from them toward Highway 92, some trucking business, and they've got these big box trucks that are almost in the street. And I saw somebody walking, and they had to go out into the street because those trucks are parked right there. I mean, and it's, like I said, it has been two years, and you still cannot get those vehicles off the right-of-way. Somebody's going to get hurt.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welch. I think it's a temporary, because I've been there where they haven't been in the street too. So we'll just have our Police Department and Code Enforcement Department look into it. You said you were going to say something, Ms. Reed. I saw the bubble.
I just want to note that that particular property is in court now and dealing with that problem. So it's being addressed.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Mayor Pro Tem, former Councilman Segal, good to see you, always honorary. Any other comments?
May I have one comment?
Yes, sir.
The greatest show on earth come on about 8:30. So make sure everybody watches this.
What's the greatest show on earth, Councilman Davis?
It's the Saints game.
Oh, Lord. Okay. If we don't have any other business, then this meeting is adjourned.